Welcome, everybody, to the May 30th, 2017 Selectmen's Meeting. A little feedback here.
Good enough, I could listen to you once. Not getting it.
Well, just in case you missed it.
Some next runway part.
I just heard you again.
That's better. Six thirty, we're going to go into Executive Session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, bargaining or litigation with regards to dispatch contract grievance and conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel regarding town managers' contract. After Executive Session, we'll come back into the regular session and I'll read the agenda at that time. Motion?
Move to go into Executive Session?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Okay, welcome back, everybody. Again, this is a May 30th, 2017 Selectmen's Meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, Citizens Input. 7:05, Jared Craig, Foxborough Cultural Council, vote approve Marcia Felix as a member of the Foxborough Cultural Council. 7:15, Foxborough Commission on Disability. Foxborough Commission on Disability present the annual Above and Beyond Awards to individuals and businesses that enhance the lives of people with disabilities. 7:25, Farmers Market Update. 7:35, Discussion Approve Fiscal Year '18 Board of Selectmen Meeting Schedule. 7:40, Vehicle Use Policy. Discuss process to amend vehicle use policy. 7:50, Selectmen's Update. Eight o'clock, Town Managers' Update. 8:10, Assistant Town Managers' Update. And we have a bunch of action items to go over. Doc, will you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
A pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Past 7:10. Is anybody here for Citizens Input? Citizens Input. Seeing none. We'll move right on to 7:05, Jared Craig, Foxborough Cultural Council. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you so much for having us again. I'm here as an individual from the Foxborough Cultural Council, but we have a really great group of volunteers at our core that is just so full of energy. And I'm here to present Marcia Felix to you because she is also has a lot of energy for the arts in this town. And I'll let her speak for herself of her own experience and how she's going to bring that to Foxborough.
Hello, Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen of the community. My name is Marcia Felix. In addition to being a resident of Foxborough, I'm a wife, a mother, and a designer who has a vision for bringing excellence to this community in the form of art and culture. I graduated from Northeastern University with a bachelor's degree in media arts and design. I've worked for advertising and design agencies as well as freelance for two decades, designing everything from corporate collateral pieces to advertising campaigns while increasing their profits and brand awareness. I then decided to take a sabbatical to raise and then homeschool my young children. At this time, I became very involved in my community. And I started a local Moms Club in which I developed and taught an Art in the Park program for young children. After that, I organized and ran a local homeschool group connecting students with various educational and cultural opportunities. Through this, I developed a passion for education and for creating educational and cultural opportunities where their other eyes weren't. I look forward to using my design expertise and my community outreach experience to enrich the lives of Foxborough through the arts. Foxborough is well-known for football, but our small community has much more to offer. And with the support of the Foxborough Cultural Council, I plan to showcase its talents to enrich this community. My vision is to work toward establishing an art and cultural center in Foxborough, possibly the former fire station, and offer art, music, dance, theater, and cooking classes while teaching the community to be socially and environmentally responsible. Ideally, we would invite artists, authors, playwrights, musicians, dancers, et cetera, to educate, inspire, and ultimately mentor our youth and encourage community outreach programs. These are just a few of the examples of how I would like to bring the community of Foxborough together through art and culture. On a smaller scale, I am happy to offer my graphic design and event planning background to contribute to this council. I'm thrilled and honored to be nominated to become a member of the Foxborough Cultural Council, and I look forward to serving the community to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No, I seem pretty well qualified.
I have a question for Jared. How do you recruit and find such top-quality people? Every time you come here, you have like the best person in front of us, so I mean, hats off to you. I really need to talk to you after this.
I have to give a shout out to the Foxborough Moms Club. I think I'm the lone dad in it. And they're a great, they're a great group and there's fine people like Marcia in it, so.
That's an hidden talent out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a good thing.
Thanks.
No, I mean, this is great. Looks awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just saying, well said, well spoken. Over the last year, you've made tremendous leaps and bounds of bringing programs and phenomenal people to wrap around the cultural parts of Foxborough and very appreciated. I wish you the best of luck and there's plenty of opportunity to grow this, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for volunteering. I think it would be a great asset. And just as an aside, we got a letter and a packet from the Founder's Day Committee. And the theme of Founder's Day this year is the history of Foxborough. And I don't know whether you realize, but the Mass Cultural Council is, was actually started by a woman from Foxborough, not the Mass Cultural Council. She started the Arts Lottery, which turned into Mega Bucks. But anyway, it was Jaclyn O'Reilly. She was known as Jackie O'Reilly. She's passed away a few years ago. Her portrait used to hang in Town Hall. I know it's not there. I think it's probably going to be moved to the new Town Hall. But she was instrumental in starting these cultural councils throughout the state. And so that's part of the history of Foxborough in regard to the arts. And it's one of the things that we'll be celebrating on Founder's Day on June 11th. And thank you for joining, joining the council.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
One other quick plug since she spoke for a long time. Though, in the fall, the Foxborough Cultural Council had granted a grant to the Lane property, the Lane Project, and it made a world of difference. And we've got a ribbon-cutting Thursday at noon time that I think the email invite went out. So if you guys or anyone's available this Thursday at noon time to come, you can see the, what happened when you gave us the grant and the results from it, so, very appreciated.
Thanks so much. I'll be there. I look forward to it. Thanks.
Marcia, good luck.
Thank you.
Jared, keep up the good work. I gotta, like Chris said, I gotta find out where your cell line is.
I got first dibs. We have to make a motion?
Yep. Move to approve Marcia Felix as a member of the Foxborough Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a little after 7:15, Foxborough Commission on Disability. Come on up to the table, please.
Can I just bring them up? And you want to bring them to the chair?
Yeah.
So, good evening. My name is Sue Collins, and I represent the Foxborough Commission on Disability. And each year, the commission is now giving out Above and Beyond Awards to recognize special people who make a positive difference in the lives of people with disabilities. We give one award to a business and one to an individual. So we are very pleased to announce that the business award recipient this year is Stop &amp; Shop number 494 on Main Street in Foxborough. Stop &amp; Shop has employed people with disabilities for many years, and currently, they have seven employees with disabilities. Stop &amp; Shop recognizes that having a disability does not prevent people from working and being a productive part of a business. They are shining example to other local businesses of a true community employer. Stop &amp; Shop has jobs to be done, and they employ people to do them. And they make a point of offering employment to those who other businesses may overlook. And for this, the Disability Commission commends them. The commission works to improve the lives of those with disabilities, and we are proud to have a local business that does the same. So it's my pleasure and honor to present a Stop &amp; Shop 494 with the Above and Beyond Award. And this is Mike McKenna, representing Stop &amp; Shop.
Thank you very much.
Our individual winner has brought her entourage.
Yeah, her fan club. So this is Barbara Manuel Pele. She's the recipient of this year's individual award. So Barbara has many ties to our community. She and her husband and their two daughters lived here for many years. Her sister and brother-in-law was a Foxborough police officer, and they raised their children here. And Barbara's mother lived in our senior housing and was very active on local boards. Well, Barbara is currently the Integration Coordinator for the Foxborough YMCA, where she creates and runs programs for people with disabilities with a focus on children's programs. Several YMCA families and staff nominated Barbara for this award. So Barbara is wonderfully generous person who has spent her adult life working to help others. In the 1970s, she volunteered with the Peace Corps in Sierra Leone, West Africa, for three years as a teacher, an educational trainer, and disability advocate before becoming a teacher for an educational collaborative here in Foxborough. Then she worked for almost two decades to deinstitutionalize the Rantham State School, moving individuals with disabilities into community homes. And next, she became the CEO of a provider agency that supported people with disabilities in residential settings. Then Barbara began working for the Hakamak YMCA as one of their first integration coordinators. She took a leave of absence from that position to do another stint with the Peace Corps a few years ago, traveling to Liberia in West Africa to help rebuild their educational system, which suffered greatly from over a decade of war. Since her return, she's been the Integration Coordinator for the Hakamak YMCA in North Attleboro, and now is back here in Foxborough. So we can think of no better individual who represents the qualities and philosophy for the Foxborough Commission on Disabilities Above and Beyond Award than Barbara Manuel Pele. She sees and builds on the gifts of each individual and truly enhances the quality of life of individuals with disabilities. So it is my pleasure and honor to present Barbara Manuel Pele with our Above and Beyond Award.
Come on up, guys. Come on up. I need, I need them here because even though this says an individual award, it's not an individual award. It takes a village. And we've been all together. I've watched most of these kids grow up. I mean, Dennis was what, what's he, 25 now? He was like 20. So he was like, for the past 10 years, I've just watched them grow up. And at the Y, what we've done is we've been able to get it so that any program that's offered at our YMCA is available to anyone, regardless of what their age, sex, race, or disability is. And so my job is to help adapt the environment to make it so they can be successful. Then we also realized that the young adults, or they made me realize that the young adults and the older adults were kind of getting left out of the loop because when kids become pre-teens and teens, they don't go to, you know, they don't hang at the Y as much. They come to work out maybe, but most of them are on high school teams or town teams or something like that. So we started our own teams. We have a flag football team and a basketball team, which many of the coaches are here. And we also started a, what we call a VIP club, which is a club where they learn to volunteer, and they come and they do service in the community. Foxborough, they'll help out at Founder's Day. They help out at various things at the Y. They do food pantries, all kinds of things, to learn to give back and to show people that they have a lot to offer as well. And I'm really proud of them. I thank you so much. Again, it's for all of us. It takes, and the Y itself, I mean, I could never do that, do what I'm doing without people like Tony behind me. Tony Kelce is one of my supervisors. And the different branches, the people there really hold on to this as a value. It's one of the values of the Y, that everybody deserves a chance. And so, again, even though it's individual, I think it's a group award. You guys want to see it? You don't know what to do, do you? Actually, I just still want to leave the parents out. Without the parents, none of this would happen.
Barbara, hold on one minute. We have something from our state rep.
Barbara, and all of your fans, I wanted to just thank you for all that you've done and certainly recognize Tony Kelce and his wisdom and leadership along with the Hakamak Y. It's been an amazing ride. We started 11 years ago with the Integration Initiative, and we found excellent people, you along the way, who have been so inspirational to many to show that we're open and caring. And regardless of all the things that you listed, everyone matters at the Y. And I've watched a lot of these young guys grow up, seen out on the golf course when we play with all the athletes in October, see at the Legends Ball when you all come in with your Patriot fan, or your hockey fan, or baseball fan. It's really amazing, and the community outreach has been really, really special. So it's really an honor for me to present you and the gang with this proclamation. From the House of Representatives, hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offices sincere congratulations to Barbara Manuel Pele. In recognition of being honored as Above and Beyond individual award winner for your commitment to making a positive difference in the lives of people with disabilities, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all the endeavors. And you've been taking on this stint somewhere with the Peace Corps. Given today the 30th day of May, 2017, at the State House, signed by Robert DeLeo, our Speaker, and yours truly, Jay Barrows, State Representative. So congratulations and thank you all. I don't want to let Mike out. Sorry, Mike. All you're seven guys at work. That's why you're outnumbered. But this too is from the House of Representatives. Hereby known to all, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offices sincere congratulations to Stop &amp; Shop in recognition of being honored as the business award recipient of Above and Beyond Awards. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given today. The May 30th, 2017, signed by the Speaker, Robert DeLeo, and yours truly, Jay Barrows. And I just want to say that Stop &amp; Shop, both in Mansfield and Foxborough, which I'm familiar with, really take your corporate commitment seriously. You really go above and beyond in so many different ways. And I don't think many people realize sometimes the amount of effort you put into our communities in supporting different initiatives, healthy futures, you know, working with folks with disabilities, providing them an opportunity. They inspire us as well, and I really appreciate all you do in our communities and your organization. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll just add that part two of this award is that everybody will be marching in the Founder's Day parade under the Disability Commission banner. Yes.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you on Founder's Day.
I heard there's a trip to Dairy Queen.
Well said, Tony.
Shall we bring some back?
Always a pleasure.
You going to Dairy Queen with them?
Can we get an update?
I'm going to the front right now.
Get an update or something?
Very much having us.
Thanks for being.
Thanks for having us.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Excuse me, Mr. Barrows.
Hi, Nick.
Since you're here.
Yes.
Any updates on anything going on in the state?
Oh, like you don't have a prepared statement? Wait a minute, hold on. Let me sit a second. No, I think, I think things that we're trying to get through the state budget. Honestly, the Senate came back with a much different product than the House did. And I don't know, you know, how they're going to be able to flesh out things with the Conference Committee. Those folks haven't been named yet, so we'll learn something probably more tomorrow, who they'll be. You know, I believe that local aid and Chapter 70 is going to be preserved, but some other things are probably going to be, having to be cut. The revenues are down 700 million, depends on who you talk to. What we heard from the House Ways and Means Chair was that while we have been enticed maybe with some federal tax reductions, both individual and corporate, some corporations are taking the effort in this fiscal year to, you know, fund pensions, you know, so they get the deduction at 35. If it dropped to 15, the money's not worth as much next year. You know, so some different things like that. We're not seeing a spike in income tax that we thought with the unemployment numbers as they are, with the minimum wage going up. One would have thought that sales taxes would gone up. The numbers today came out, people saving more than ever before, historic, which could mean the credit score is much higher, better on average. So it could mean they're getting ready to borrow, so that'll get things moving again. Or they're just saving because they remember what happened in 2008 and 09. We are moving ahead with the Foxfield Plaza. That thing's flying along. I'm looking forward to the construction of the Roundabout that should happen soon. We made a presentation to the Board of Selectmen in Mansfield last week around a grade crossing to give us some relief on 106, which would affect folks coming in from Foxborough to get out of the train station parking lot, what's going on. Still working with the MassDOT on the Foxborough, trying to move that. I know there's been an uptick in newspaper accounts and people picking one side or the other. So, you know, hopefully, we'll get something with the Fiscal Control Board. And happy to see some economic development discussions around downtown. Got some things going on on Wall Street, certainly around the Common. Restaurants about ready to open, I think. And the Glorious Town Hall, which was a long time in the making. It looks fantastic. Town manager gave me a tour a couple of weeks ago, and it really looks good. So you should be all proud of that. And that will just add to the vitality of downtown as we move into the future, so. So that's it. That's it? That's all you got? It was a great, I will say it was a great Memorial Day event yesterday, you know, led by Mike Johns. It was really nice to see people come out and take part of that. And that guy's amazing. So it was really a great event and well-attended in spite of the weather. And I think we were lucky that it didn't rain. So, thank you to you and thanks for the work you're doing.
The Chairman, I just, I just want to say, I don't get a chance to say this very often, but I just want to say it's really a pleasure to work with Representative Barrows. He's always there to support us and everything we ask for. I mean, he never says no to anything we try to do. Even though it's not always easy to get stuff done, but he makes every effort and then some. And then it's reflected in all the things we've been able to, so successful in getting done. So just really appreciate it. I want you to know that.
Thank you. And I know I forgot to update one other thing. I've been working with the Chairman of Third Reading on our bill around the mandated reporter. We had a meeting last Friday with one of the district attorneys to garner some support. So these things are starting to percolate. Everything percolates very slowly, as Bill can attest to. And I think Jim as well. It just takes a long time, but we're building support. Chairman Spiliotis, who came out to visit our committee, is still very, very much committed to seeing that this gets done in this session. So, you know, we're making some headway there. And I think I'll see you at noon time at the Lane Property.
If you can make it.
Thursday, I'm going to, it's on my calendar.
All right, I'll add 15 minutes to the speaker.
I could have, you know, spin it off. Yeah, there you go.
I appreciate you, like, you do make it to everything that you can. It's very appreciated.
You do amazing things. And, you know, yesterday, I was walking next to Bill, and I said, this, when we circled the Common and, you know, it was behind Ginny, and you could see, this is like Small Town America. You know, the passion, what we just did with Above and Beyond. I mean, you have corporate partners, you have volunteers, the Arts Council. I mean, you got it all, and you do a great job managing it all. And you've got great leadership, and I'm just proud to have you, you know, it's one of my communities. I think it's pretty neat. And so, keep up the good work. You're doing good things, and you're managing it all. And there's a lot of balls up in the air, and it's not easy volunteering on that side of the table. So I really appreciate the fact that, I usually, I do get asked to do things, but it's usually all good stuff. You know, not bailing you out.
That's right.
We had a hearing this morning, too, with Alcohol Task Force Commission. Came to Foxborough, the library, and said some good input from the community. So that was well-received as well, so they were happy to be here. So I better get up or I'll keep remembering to say more stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Are you going to the Farmers Market Update?
I wasn't planning on it, but I can summarize it. So this topic, if you remember, the plan was to have a farmer's market. And you may have been speaking to Debbie about it at Giadino. Just had a hard time getting the depth and the numbers of farmers in their markets to come in. So I think the committee decided, rather than do it half-assed, we're going to take a rain check on this summer and shoot for next summer. Where we can, it was a little rushed, a little tight to get things done with everyone's schedule. So hopefully, next summer.
I think part of the problem they found, too, is that Sunday morning is turning out to be not such a great time because a lot of the farmers on, their staff can't get here. The farmers can do it, but their staff, they usually have that Sunday off. So they're finding that maybe perhaps a different day would be better. And that, so when Debbie said to me, she was having real trouble with it, I said, well, you know, take the time. The message here is that with their postponing, they're not canceling it. So, and I want to be abundantly clear about that. So even if it happens next year instead of this year, as Jim correctly points out, we want to make sure it's done, done the right way.
There's nothing worse than have, open up a farmer's market and have five.
Four people.
And it doesn't go much faster.
Wouldn't be a good thing for everybody, so.
Do you know if, do they need more volunteers? Do they have enough volunteers?
Well, it's, I think, that part of it, I haven't heard anything in terms of a concern. It's just the fact that the actual farmers themselves, they couldn't get, because a lot of the farmers are committed to different places around the state throughout the week. But, so Sunday is their Sabbath day, and they take that day off, a lot of them. So they don't come out on Sunday mornings. Even though it probably, that's probably why it's such a good day to do it, you would think, because nobody else seems to have one. Well, that's, that's the reason why. So they learn that throughout their process.
So it could, like, be during the week?
It could be.
Could it be coordinated with, like, the concerts on the Common? Or would that be too much activity on the Common at one time?
Yeah, really successful. And I dare say, once this happens, you'll be surprised how many people come to it. That you probably would be a conflict to do that. It's a good thought, but I think you might want to, you know, you might want to do a back-to-back, something like that, you know, so one night, then the next night, that type of thing. But I wouldn't do it the same night. I think you'd probably have a little bit of a conflict.
I think one of the concerns is loading all the materials in and out of the Common. And what, what time do you do that at?
Right.
You got to remember, it is, it is a state highway that goes through the Common.
Yeah, exactly.
So a Thursday rush hour is a Thursday rush hour.
And while we all know that the, that the, that that part of the downtown is so visible, we may want to think about whether or not that's the right place for that because it's, the access to it is difficult. So perhaps there are areas in the downtown, you know, maybe the Snyder parking lot, something like that. You know, off a railroad might be a better place to have it because it provides parking and it's a lot safer for people to get to. But it's still accessible to the downtown. It brings people into the downtown, which is huge. So something to think about with this, you know, but more to come on that front, obviously.
Let's see, 7:35. Approve 2008.
Let's see, seven thirty-five, approve two thousand eight fiscal year, two thousand eighteen Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Everybody look at the dates, any conflicts?
I think December twenty-sixth is a very tough, the day after Christmas. Getting stuff on the agenda the week of Christmas to get it on there is, usually we end up moving it at the last minute.
When's, I didn't check, when's Thanksgiving?
It's in November.
That's a good question.
Usually on a Thursday.
Can have Siri, but there's no connection.
Thanksgiving is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, alright, so that's okay. Yeah, so maybe, maybe we move the twenty-sixth.
I don't think it, you know, move it to the nineteenth, you get back to Mac, back to the, with the twelfth.
Can we just do one, one, one meeting in December?
Well, the only challenge with that is all the licensing comes in, all the licensing rules.
We, we go to, we have to go to Town Hall sign those anyway.
Yeah, we have to act.
Get a vote on them.
We get, unless you get them all, get them all done, but on the twelfth.
And then there's the last, the people want to stay open, prob, maybe for New Year's Eve, you know, those things, those would have to be done.
You might want, you might want to think about going back-to-back, twelve and nineteen.
Yeah.
And then the nineteenth, we just do licenses.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Would just be a quick meeting, just do licenses and.
Yeah, I think that was.
Okay.
Are, are you going to send out notices to all the liquor license holders to remind them that if, weren't we, you going to do that? To remind them if they want to have extended hours?
We made, yeah, remember, we made an order that last year to put that in the letter.
Yeah, we put it actually in the letter.
So can you, can you give the date of the meetings so that they have to be in before?
I think they want, we want their, all their, we should probably have all their stuff in by the end of November, I would think, so we can prepare everything for the summer meeting.
Because we don't want to have a special meeting just to, you know, comedy.
I mean, inevitably you're going to find somebody who's going to miss it, but, but I'd rather have one or two as opposed to a bunch of them. So Caitlin's going to, we'll take, take note of that, we'll deal with that.
So it'll be the twelfth and the nineteenth?
Yeah.
The nineteenth would be reserved for licenses and extensions.
Any other changes?
Everything else looks good to me.
Yeah, some of those dates are pretty far out.
Yeah, I know.
But, yeah, on, on the surface, they look okay.
Yeah, move to accept the fiscal year twenty-eighteen Board of Selectmen meeting schedule?
With the amendment, one amendment, one amendment.
With one amendment, moving the twenty-sixth visit, meeting December twenty-sixth to December nineteenth.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? See none, all is in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Discuss process to amend vehicle use policy.
So I'll, I'll try and start this conversation off by saying, this was a request made to, to take a look at the vehicle marking issue, which we, it isn't formally addressed in the policy at all. So, so then we started looking at it, and I said, well, geez, you know, we really haven't, if we're going to do this, let's take a look at all the markings issue, because it's nice to have a uniform policy, so then I started doing research on this thing, and find out that it's, there is no standard across the state, in fact, there's no laws, no requirement across the state, and so, Debbie, I think we're all set with your issue, so.
Well, I apologize, I thought it was an action item, I didn't know it was an agenda item.
That's okay.
It was what the farmer's market, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
It's Sunday.
So, so then we start, you know, because there is no, but yet we have concerns about departments being uniform to a degree, and then, and as I talked to a couple of, of communities around the state, I said, does anybody have a real consistent policy? And it's, it's not, there aren't a lot of those. And then I started researching, I did a Googled it, and I said, you know, and then I looked at ICMA and all the different associations, and I couldn't find anybody that really addressed this, unless they, unless you had like a fleet manager type person that does this. And there's not many communities in the state that have a fleet manager, and, and I did find one in Needham, who I talked to extensively, and he said that there is no uniformity when it comes to markings. In fact, I was asking about, you know, he was, he was, I was telling him about how our vehicles are done, and he said, well, actually, what I'd like to do is to be more like yours. He said, where you have, especially when it comes to the color of the vehicles, you know, we have white, all-white vehicles for fire, we have, you know, the blue and white, of course, for blue, for, for the, for the police. What we, you have, what you have is really nice, is you have the orange for the DPW, you have the, the blue for the wa, for the water, and you have the green for, for parks. He said, we'd like to get to that, I said, we don't even have that. So, he said, in the markings part, he said, we're looking on uniformity for the markings as well. So he said, that's something we're working on now, he says, we come up with something, we'll let you know, but they're trying to standardize that whole thing as well. So then it comes to public safety, and public safety has changed. Now, there used to be a uniformity when it came to, well, there is no uniformity when it comes to markings themselves on police and public safety vehicles, and then with regards to chief vehicles, there's no requirement at all, even under, under the NFPS, NFPA, which is National Public Fire, Public, Public, Fire Protection Agency rules and regulations. The only, that only applies to the actual engines themselves. The, the administrative vehicles, fire chiefs, deputy chiefs, actually, those, those go, those have changed dramatically in the past five years. In fact, most vehicles now on the, on the police, fire chief and fire deputies are not marked at all now. In fact, they have, in many cases, the markings that we have on our vehicles now are actually at the top of the spectrum in terms of what's being done. Whereas, like, for instance, we have right now, a fire chief vehicle has a fire chief on the door, and also has a marker on the fender. Of the, of the thirteen communities in our area, only two actually have that. The rest of them have no markings at all, or just the fire chief underneath the door. So they, that's changed. And that only changed in the past, and the, and the guy from Needham told me this, he said, that's only changed in the past five to ten years. They used to be all marked, not anymore. The deputy vehicles are still marked to a degree, but not nearly as, as much as the, as they, as they were as well. So a lot of the deputy vehicles, they have no markings at all either. And part of that that speaks to the issue is that these are twenty-four-seven vehicles, so therefore they do use these vehicles for personal use, they're allowed to, because they're twenty-four-seven on-call vehicles. And what's happened is that when people, they see them, people see them in the vehicles, they start questioning whether, why those vehicles are parked in certain areas. Well, it's because they, they can, they can do that. So then the question became, okay, so that's, that's one aspect of this. So let's take a look at, if we want to grab some uniformity, why don't we develop a group to evaluate this from all the departments and have a discussion? Because I don't think it's ever been done. And in fact, you know, Mary Beth said that to me one day, she goes, you know, if you take a look at our police vehicles, they're not, they're not uniform in terms of their colors or their markings. And then, and, and, you know, the, the, I think we have a pretty good handle on the public works vehicles, and they're pretty uniform. And the fire vehicles, by and large, are inconsistent, but not uniformly in terms of, across the board, in terms of lettering, and, and I'm not just fire, but all, all the vehicles, they should all look pretty much the same. So then the question is, how do we do that? And I think if we put together a subcommittee group, which represent, with representatives from each of the departments, or a couple represented from the board, and, and then talk about what we should be doing, do the research, and sort of everybody's clear on what's required now, everybody will have the same understanding. But what we have done right now is, I just want everybody to know, is at the top of the spectrum, you know, so we're doing the right thing. It just, it may be different than what we've used to do, used to have been done, but now it is, it is, it has changed, and that's what the industry has done over the past ten years, ten to fifteen, uh, by the ten years.
So would the other, other part of that be identifying when vehicles are supposed to be used? Who should be using them, when?
Well, we, we have that addressed in the policy now. The, the policy says that if you're assigned a vehicle, you have, you have twenty-four, but there are certain requirements in the policy itself that address that. The issue is, I think should say, that before that road, that, that vehicle gets put on the road, it should meet whatever minimum requirements are of the, of the, of the, of the markings before that goes on the road. That's something that's not addressed anywhere. And so there, there's been situations where vehicles have gone out, and they haven't been fully marked before that's happened. So, or if there's no any requirement to be marked that's happened. So I think we want to make sure we do that, and address it consistently. So, but I think it'd be nice to actually, and, you know, this is an opportunity too, that if we want to change the, the markings, we could actually come up with a, with a, with a standard that we all agree to, and then, and then use that uniform, uniformity throughout the entire town. A lot of places just don't do it, but it's a good, it's a nice, it's a best practice that I think we should, that we should try and develop.
What, I think it's important, I, I mean, these are taxpayer, taxpayer-owned vehicles. And that's, that's my concern, that town vehicles should have the Foxborough logo, however you want to do it. I mean, if you want a uniform, and you, you know, have them uniform, fine. But I, I think every, every town vehicle that is paid for with taxpayer money, owned by the municipality, should have a Foxborough designation.
Well, I, I think you got to be careful there, because there are, there are reasons why you don't want to do that. And I, I really don't want to get into the discussion tonight, I, I think I'd rather have the discussion at the table with everyone so they can better explain it to me, but there are very solid reasons why that's not done, particularly in, in police.
Well, with the exception of police.
Police, police.
But with the fire too, there's also good exceptions to that as well, which, I even, I was, I've learned as part of this process too, that hasn't been discussed openly before, and I think it's, it's good to have that conversation, so you have a better understanding of that. But it's not done just for the sake of, of convenience, there, there are good reasons as to why that's not done.
But, but also traditionally, in the town of Foxborough, the municipal vehicles have been designated with the town seal on them.
That's true.
And that's traditional.
That's absolutely true.
And if, and if three hundred and fifty other communities don't do that, well, that, that's what three hundred and fifty other communities don't do.
Well, we got ourselves by bylaws, not traditions. I mean, so the question then becomes, question is whether or not, if there is a policy or procedure that we want in place, then we should, then we should put it in writing, reduce it to writing, and that's, that's the case. I will tell you that, what we, we usually guys policy and procedure is, is, is industry practice. And what's usually done, and, and so it's consistent, so we're not, we're not treating ourselves differently than anyone else. And so that's what we're trying to do, get to that point. And at the end of the day, if people feel differently about it, then, then so be it. But the reason why you put those things in writing is because people change, and traditions don't always go with those same people. So I think you want to, you want to, you want to address that, if, if you're going to, if you're going to consistently do it.
So with the exception of law enforcement, which obviously you don't want to plaster it out there that if you're on a undercover assignment or something, the town seal, town of Foxborough, animal control officer, Department of Public Works, Recreation Department. Am I missing something? Is, is that, with the exception of police, is that an issue with any department?
Well, what's not done, if you look in, even in public works, there's not the consistent lettering on all the vehicles, the seal is on there. But sometimes you don't see all the lettering from all the, the different.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll, we'll pull it all together, and eventually, ten years from now, it'll all be the same, because vehicles come and go.
Right.
But is there a department other than police that is not appropriate to have the town seal on, with the town of Foxborough and their department?
Well, I can tell you that, that both, that, that the, as far as the fire department goes, I know that the, the two, the administrative vehicles, the fire chief and deputy chiefs, are, are, the deputy chiefs are fully marked. The fire chief vehicle is marked, as inconsistent with the standard that's out there now, actually exceeds the standard in the way it's done now. So, the, those vehicles are all properly marked according to what the standard is. The question is, is that, is that good enough? And, and, and the answer is, I don't know, because I think you haven't fully vetted this issue, and, and why are we discussing it without having fully vet, fully vetting? And I think that's what, that's what I'm trying to get to. And understand all the reasons why it isn't, or isn't, is or isn't done, because I think that's, that's fair, 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 good policy discussion.
What is the standard that you're talking about the?
I think the lettering.
Certainly not the town of Foxborough standard, because it had always been fully lettered, just like the deputy chief one. So what standard are you talking about?
Well, the question is whether you want a standard, that, would, would the standard, would that, would that vehicle be marked?
No, but going back to what your statement, it's currently, the way it's marked now, it's, exceeds the standard, what standard?
Well, the standard, well, most vehicle, vehicles, if you survey the communities, and I can provide that information to you easily, that most vehicle, most fire vehicles, administrative vehicles, do not have any markings at all, other than the blue plate and the, and the, and the emergency lights.
But our, our standard has always been the chiefs and deputy chiefs have been fully marked.
Well, the deputy, the deputy chiefs have been marked, it was during the past five years, that standard has changed when it comes to chiefs. It's probably.
But it hasn't changed in Foxborough until this, this new vehicle, because this prior vehicle was fully marked, just like all the other ones, right?
It was, but that was before the change came into place, in terms of the industry. So, but it was not written anywhere, Chris, is my point.
No, I, I know, I just read through the whole policy, it's nowhere.
It's not mentioned anywhere. So then, so that's, that's the reason why, if, if you're going to put something in writing, then put it in writing. But I think that's, sound policy should be based on something, other than just say, we've always done it that way.
No, I, I fully understand you.
I, I have, I have no issue with setting up a, a committee, some from, you know, police, fire, DPW, one or two members from the board, maybe Mary Beth.
Inspections too.
Inspections, yeah, because we have a lot of inspection vehicles.
Just kind of, you know, go through the policy, you know, just like you do with the.
Like anything else.
The other policies, you know, on your, on your typical reviews, just go through it, make sure it's, it's current, make sure it, it still applies. And, you know, we can, you know, get everything in, in writing.
Yeah, is, is, my, my concern is, as long as it's balanced on the other side, if we're asking, because a lot of these vehicles are going to people's homes. If you ask the people that are driving them home, most likely they're going to say less is better, because they can go to places and not be recognized, not saying it happens. If they were setting up a committee, I don't want to hear from all the people that are using the cars and not the taxpayers on this side. So, you know, this is not the first time it's come up, we've, it's been, for a better part of a year or longer, we've been going back and forth. I thought the general consensus from, I don't know, called common sense, or from this board, has been logo, name of department in the town of Foxborough. And if people questions why you're at Dunkin' Donuts on a Saturday, there's an answer, I'm on duty twenty-four-seven. I'd rather err on over-marking it than having department heads say, well, we, we want smaller, better. Because at the end of the day, the vehicle shouldn't be used unless it's, you know, in, inappropriate place.
Right, and, and I'm not suggesting the vehicles are being used inappropriately, but I'm just saying to you that there is good reason why, that's, it's not just for simple, for, for convenience sake. There are legitimate reasons why they do not mark the vehicles like they used to. And I think that discussion should be held, so you have a full understanding of that before you act on it.
I, I, I agree, but I think it's got to be a balance if we hear, I, I just don't want all the department heads and town managers.
Well, that's fine, yeah, I think you, listen, at the end of the day, I don't have a vehicle, so it doesn't, it doesn't affect me at all. But I, I, what I look at is what's the industry standard and what's the industry practice, and then, and then hear from reasons why we should, we should, we should deviate from that. And I, and right now, I have, I haven't heard, and I haven't heard the full story on both sides, so I'd like to, I'd like to hear that.
Are those, like, any vehicle like the police chief, fire chief, the SUVs, are those considered a commercial vehicle? Because the town is.
They're, they're considered to be public safety vehicles.
Does that fall into the category of like, a commercial vehicle?
Official, they get the blue plates.
The blue plates, yeah, they all have blue plates on.
No, I know that.
Except for the, actually, some undercover vehicles do not.
If you have a commercial vehicle, there is very strict lettering guidelines on a commercial vehicle.
Yeah, they're not, they don't follow that.
They follow under like an auto liability policy requirement, so. I mean, one of the unintended consequences of this discussion is, you know, it would be beautiful to someday line up everything, and they all have the same, you know, size, lettering, color, you know, it would be really nice to have, like Bill described, a fleet that, that matched. And, you know, you ca, as you replace vehicles, you catch them all up and they all look the same. It's kind of like having, you know, a department that wears a uniform, eventually, everybody should have the same uniform, you know, whether they bought it twenty years ago or this year. So it's just an aesthetic that, you know, should be discussed.
The, the other thing is that you, you see that the standardization has occurred much more significantly, more noticeably, I think, in the recent years in public works, because it's all one-to-one roof now. So there is a state, they, they follow their own consistent standard in terms of lettering. They do follow, there's a reason for they have the different colors, because it designings the different divisions. And that, you know, even the, I mean, the water, water administrative vehicles are white. And that, you know, even the, um, I mean, the, the water, uh, water, uh, administrative vehicles are white. The, um, I think the engineer's vehicle is silver. Um, so that's, it just designates the different divisions. But the blue, um, the blue service vehicles are all, water service vehicles are all blue. Public Works is green and, uh, uh, Pyway rather, and, 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 uh, orange rather, and the, and the, uh, Fox is green, for obvious reasons. But their lettering is pretty consistent for the most part. The one thing that's missing on some of the administrative vehicles is, um, maybe some additional designation as to what it is. I've noticed that a little bit.
Who, who has administrative vehicles that aren't marked right now?
Uh, police chief is the only one that's really unmarked.
Right, and, and usually because that car is used for.
Used for different purposes.
Different purposes.
Right, well, but, but as could be said about the fire chief too, which has not been said publicly, but I can tell you that's in fact the case. So, I mean, there are investigations that occur sometimes, and, and that vehicle's used for that purpose. And there's also, um, situations involving in, um, in, uh, follow-up on, 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 well, I'd rather not discuss it here, but I'd rather have it discussed so that we can, I can be in a better position to respond to it, but let them present it to you. But there is sound reasoning for it. I'm not the person you should be arguing with on this issue, is one on point. It's, I'd rather have you discuss it directly with the folks that are doing the work and, and, and can give you good reasons for it.
So, does it make sense to have a, a subcommittee? Do you, does it make sense to have?
I think it would be a good idea. I might, that's my sense, because I, I think we should all agree on it. And then, and then, and then, and bring it back here and have the board have, have their input, especially have, and have board members serve in the subcommittee. And you can hear directly from the, from the users and from, and from, and if, if you wanna put a, a resident, resident or two on it, I'm fine with that too. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not here to hide anything. I just want everybody, I wanted that to be a good sound policy discussion. That's all I'm, that's all I'm advocating for.
What do you guys think?
Think a committee's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean.
Sounds like a committee.
Yeah, nominate Ginny to be on it from the board.
He said Ginny, not Jimmy.
I just think, I just think this, this one situation has been festering like way too long.
I just wanna get it done.
Wasting too many man-hours and everybody's time on it, and it's ridiculous as far as I'm concerned, and it's like, we gotta do something.
Well, and I, unfortunately, I think there's, there's a lot of information that hasn't come out, and I think it's important that everybody has a full understanding of. And I think you'll have a better appreciation for it when the recommendations come out based on factual evidence. It's better to do that, I think. You'll feel better as a board.
Can we put a time limit on the committee, three months?
Sure.
You know, not, not to be facetious, but I think.
I don't think they have things I want.
I just don't want it to be a committee that.
It could be done, no.
I, I think if you, yeah, I think if you had.
Sixty days.
Yeah, I, I think if you had one, maybe two meetings with all the different. You get all the, all the information out there that you need. I mean, it's not, it's not rocket science, but there's obviously reasons why, um, they're, they're doing things, other communities are doing things the way they're doing.
Right.
So let's, let's find it out, and, and let's, let's act appropriately.
Information is, is powerful.
Would you mind being on that committee?
No.
Anybody else?
No, but I'll go. I'll, 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 I'll sit here.
Can you have two selectmen on it?
I think two.
Two can be on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
It can be on it, but it's a public, the meetings have to be.
Yeah, we've, we've posted, yeah.
And then, Mary Beth, will you, uh, kinda spearhead it?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that.
Put the group together.
Is this one we have to be sworn in and all that, or?
Subcommittee of the board.
Just a subcommittee?
Yeah, so that's all.
You're already sworn in.
Yeah, it's, it's swearing for the other meetings.
All right, thank you.
So at least we have a plan.
Yes.
I'll reach out to both of you and we'll figure out some dates.
All right, uh, selectmen's update, um, Jake kinda stole my thunder earlier about, uh, Memorial Day, um, presentation yesterday. First of all, since when do we go counterclockwise on the, uh?
I know, that was new to me too. I, I thought we went the other way.
We did, we did that last time.
We did it the last time we did it, yeah.
Oh, you know why they do that? It's because then it goes right into the, right out to the common. See, before, now you go past the common, you would've gone past the common, the opening, and then had to run and come back and then go into it. This, this way, you go around, then come back. I didn't, I don't think we did it last year.
We started at a different place. We used to start at the, the, uh, Legion, and that's not an option now, so we had to go to the parking lot.
That's right, that's right.
Oh, we didn't have the parade last year, that's why.
It rained.
Yeah, it rained. We didn't have the parade last year.
But the year before we went counterclockwise.
I thought we did.
It just, it just seemed weird, just going in that direction.
Oh, we had it last year. We had the parade last year. Yeah, we definitely didn't cancel the parade. We canceled the.
We had the big tent.
Thing afterwards, but then so many people showed up, we had it anyways.
You, you actually, yeah, that was supposed to be the, the unveiling of the new, the new flag.
Flagpole, right.
But that, the, the original, but the first hanging of the flag did occur even in the rain.
Right, yeah, I knew that, yeah. I don't know, it's all, it's all blur.
But anyway. Yeah, it was good, that was great there.
It was, uh, very well attended, and, you know, Mike Johns did a, did a great job, as usual, uh, putting it all together, and everybody that, that participated, you know, keynote speaker was, was terrific.
He was great, yeah.
You know, kudos to everybody that was.
I gotta say, these days, I mean, cable access, I think within a few hours, the thing was up.
Yeah.
Public, you could watch it. It's phenomenal the way, uh, they turn out these things.
They don't, they don't do that live? They don't do that, they don't? Are they doing it live?
Yeah, but just turning, you know, recording it and getting it, getting it out, uh, to the public.
I think it's, it's, it's really well done. I mean, the, uh, it was a great crowd there yesterday, even, and the weather wasn't great. It was a nice turnout.
Actually, I had a friend who was driving through Foxborough during, when we were having the ceremony, and when he got to his hometown, they were also having their ceremony, and he said Foxborough had many more people.
Yeah.
At, uh, than, than his hometown, so I thought that was interesting. He was very impressed.
Yeah, it was, it was great to see that. And I, I, we have to give credit, uh, credit to Mike Johns for really, he puts stuff out on, on Twitter, and it really gets the word out to folks, and, uh, even, you know, Caitlin and, and Mosh do a lot with getting that stuff on Facebook. People do pay attention to that, they really do. So it's good to see that, uh, we're having some success in getting the word out.
Yep, and, um, you know, kudos go out to Matt Gonzalez, the, uh, the flags were terrific. Just driving into, into that common, you know, and all the, all the feeder streets.
Looks really good, very impressive.
Clean and fresh, and was good, and the, you have the, uh, barrels being planted, so starting to take shape. Just mother nature will cooperate a little bit. Some will actually be here, so.
Can I throw something in on the, uh, Memorial Day while we're talking about it? Um, the last several years, I have met Mike and his, his committee and all of the veterans at the Rock Hill Cemetery usually start out like seven-thirty. Um, it goes Rock Hill, St. Mary's, and then go down to East Foxborough. And to me, and I said this to Mike, that to me is the best part of Memorial Day, 'cause he picks a different grave every year, at a different cemetery. It's, you know, it could be a World War One vet, World War Two vet, Vietnam vet, um, does a quick, brief synopsis of who it was, and, and when they, you know, got killed, and where they served, and what they did for Foxborough. And it's really, it's really a great part. Uh, they do the salute with the, uh, the guns, usually have taps playing. And the East Foxborough one, we usually finish up there, and, um, I, there's a brand-new flagpole there. So I don't know who was responsible for that.
The one in East Foxborough?
Yeah.
I, I believe that was done privately, private donation by, um, he used to serve in the finance committee, um, served on our, excuse, serves on our audit committee.
Spiny.
Yeah, John Spiny.
Wow, that was, I had actually said to Mike last year, I said, we need to replace that flagpole, I'll take care of it. And I said to Mike at Rock Hill, I'm like, damn, I forgot about the flagpole.
No, it was brand new.
Got there, it was new, so that was good. But the, the scout that read the proclamation from the governor, he lives directly across the street from that square, and Mike and I have watched him every single year from when he was a tiny little tiger cub. He would come out in uniform and stand with us and salute with us in rain or sun. And then to see him progress in scouting and, and stand up there yesterday and read that, um, you know, it was, it was good. But I encourage anybody in, in there, tell the news, everybody in the news, that seven-thirty in the morning at Rock Hill is, is, is really pretty impressive. So Mike and his entire committee and all the veterans that, that help support it, there's usually twenty, twenty-five people, and everybody caravans around. So it's definitely something to put on the schedule next year.
Excellent.
You wanna mention about those, like?
Again?
Sure.
And, and actually Jake, another one of Jake's quotes, he, he nailed it when he said, it's small town America. And so it's a nice Thursday at noon time, if anyone wants to come by. Private donations brought, uh, the land property into some nice, um, nice development. A lot of the, the private donations, but a ton of volunteers, companies, um, private donations that came on top of it. So what you're gonna see is a, a new building, uh, from a renovation, parking lot, some nice walking trails, a nice deck. We just today put out, uh, some big farm equipment back out onto the fields that are gonna stay there, that you can walk around. Four Eagle Scout projects, uh, a walking trail, Eagle Scout project, a fire pit, a kiosk, and picnic tables all by Eagle Scouts. But it, it's nice. It's nice to see people come together and, and put something nice together. So I'll, I'll, we're asking if you wanna come by for, keep it under an hour, just to say thank you and show you what it is. Spread off of North Street at the bend where the light is and the railroad crossing.
I took a ride down last week, it was, it looked really, really good. It was really, it came along really nice.
Yeah, and people are, I mean, it's almost to the point where we're trying to work out there and you have to ask people to move their cars, because now they've discovered it, and people are eating and picnicking, and someone wants to have their wedding out there, and it's, it's a nice, simple country setting.
Yeah.
Came out, came out very nice.
Good.
Anybody have anything else?
Okay, nope, okay, thank you.
Oh, one, one last thing, uh, the JC's, the Founder's Day is coming up.
June tenth.
June tenth, yeah, and there's, uh, not, not as many floats this year. I was talking to Monica Fizzler, I, I think there's only a couple. And years back, I think every elementary school had one, and every sports group, so if you're waiting to get applications in there, um, get it in there, 'cause Founder's Day without floats is gonna be a little sad.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, we did have a, a meeting with MSBA, the, uh, Mass School, uh, Business Assistance, uh, Pro, uh, Program, done in Boston last week, where we met with them to review the, uh, candidates for, uh, design of the, uh, of the new, um, borough school project, of the, actually renovation to the Borough School Project. And, um, at the end of the day, we, we went through the process with the, uh, myself, superintendent, and, uh, school business manager, uh, you know, actually went down and met with the committee from MSBA, and we went over all the, uh, the candidates. And at the end of the day, we, uh, we ended up selecting unanimously, uh, selecting Castle Booze as the, as the, as the architect for that project. So they'll be starting their process and working on the contracts, things of that nature, over the next, uh, next few weeks. Town Hall's getting down to the wire. They, uh, were supposed to do the final cleaning this weekend, um, and there was, there's still some electrical work to be done, but I haven't, didn't get a chance to get in there today, but, um, I understand that the building is, is, is nearing completion. They, we've got probably a couple more weeks to, we're trying to get all the technology pieces figured out at this point. Nearly all the, uh, equipment is in, all the office furniture, things that, everything is pretty much in there. We're preparing on our end to get all the, uh, all the, the move taken care of. Every office is actually signed to pack there, and there's already, a lot of them are already packed, all of the, the stuff in the offices, so they're getting ready to that one big move day. We haven't finalized that day yet until we get the green light from the developer as to when, the project manager as to when we can actually do that. But we're looking, at this point, there'll be, you know, second, third, probably the third week in, in June, at this point, is what we're looking at. So, um.
Well, someone had asked, once it's all up and running, is it gonna be a little bit of an open house or an opportunity?
There is, there is, but I, we probably won't do that though. I'm thinking probably till September, September. Reason is because we wanna make sure the parking lot's in, the old building is down, and, um, that's why we, we don't, probably won't televise your meetings until August or September from there, because the parking lot won't be finished, and although the, the developer seems, wants to be out of there by the end of July. So, um, so I think what we, we'd like to shoot for is, if, if, it could be sometime in August or September, but, uh, we'd like to have a formal open house and do that. But it's sort of like the, uh, soft opening right now, you know, until we get everything up and running and everything's working properly. Uh, people will of course be able to go in there, but not until the, uh, obviously we're officially in the building. Um, we had a successful PEC process, uh, Public Employee Committee process, in terms of reviewing our health insurance plan, something that was done, uh, three years ago, and where we successfully reduced the, the cost of the program, um, going forward for the next three years, and then obviously the cost had declined again. So, um, this year, in light of that, we, we, we met again with the committee, uh, 'cause the agreement actually was finalized, was only good for, good for three years. The committee met, uh, under Mary Beth's direction. They, they, they met for only, actually officially only two meetings, right? Only two meetings, and it actually was, and the, and the agreement was reached. So, um, so what's gonna happen is that the cost of the program this year, the increase in this program will go from, was originally slated to be about five point, five point eight percent, will go about, uh, a little less than three percent. So, which is, which is a nice, a nice reduction to the town. Um, it also, it, it helps the employees too, because it costs less than ever as well. So it was a mutual agreement on that piece of it. So Mary Beth has a lot more of the details about that, but it was really a, uh, a great process. I'm really grateful the employees to be so cooperative in the process. And then, um, again, just my thanks to everybody for the Memorial Day process, Memorial Day service. Like, uh, John said, again, an outstanding job of coordinating that. It's just, uh, you know, it's just, it is, it really is, I said this three years ago when it first came, it is, is, is Americana at its finest. When you walk around that, 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 uh, that common, the way you do, and see everybody clapping and, and cheering, and if I, to see, to see that, culminate in the, uh, in the speeches, it's, it's just really quite, it's a great day for the community. So thank you.
Bill, could you speak to the water ban?
Thank you. Um, so, um, water ban is still in effect, but the, the reason why the, the effect is in, is in place is because the state has required us to, to be very careful about our use of water. Right now, there is no drought officially. The drought's been effectively limited, eliminated because of all the rain. But at any time, we could go into another very dry spell, and as a result, the state is taking very precautionary steps in trying limiting the amount of water that, that is getting used on the outside, or for outside watering purposes. We really haven't needed it at this point, because we've had so much rain, but, um, and everything is about as green as it gets. But, um, but, but just so that everybody doesn't become concerned that the water department is imposing this, it's really something that the state is taking on a statewide basis. So everybody's fully aware of that.
Yeah, the, the state has mandated that, um, everyone's limited to sixty-five gallons per person, per day. And that's why all the towns have the water bins, even though it seems like we have no drought. So the water ban started May first and will continue.
And we're sure we don't go into another drought.
Right, yeah, but I mean, but it's not, so if you get a question like, why, we've had all this rain? Well, it's not the town of Foxborough, it's not the water department, it's the state that's actually mandating this, so.
The DEP. Okay, that's all I have.
All right, before I go to Mary Beth, I, I just wanna mention, uh, thank you to the VFW. After the parade, they had everybody back to the VFW, and Mike wasn't kidding when he said heavy sandwiches and heavy dessert. They did a really nice job, and nice spread, so, um, wish more people actually went back and took advantage of it. It was a good crowd there, but.
Really?
Yeah, I think they had a little extra food, so, but thank you to them.
Yeah, very good.
Great, um, just to, uh, elaborate on Bill's, um, announcement that we've nego, successfully negotiated health insurance with all of the town and school unions, I wanna thank the groups that participated, because they were so, they came to the table so educated about it, um, so reasonable. We were able to convene two meetings and get an agreement signed. So it's, the town is going to a model, we have to benchmark against the GIC plan, and we're going to a model that, um, is a three hundred and nine hundred dollar deductible. And, um, so we discussed plan design, and then, under the chapter thirty-two B that we adopted, section twenty-one through twenty-three, we're required to, um, share twenty-five percent of the first year savings with the employees. So they also had to agree and vote on how they'd like to get that share. So we're gonna do a hot. So we're gonna do a hot, like, premium holiday for those people on health insurance. So they'll be, um, at some given time in like November, they'll, they'll not have, they'll be credited on their health insurance from this pool of savings. But in the end, both the town and the employees, um, are getting a, uh, not-too drastic change, um, a cost savings, and I think we're able to stay ahead of the curve. Um, we're supposed to match up to what the GIC offers, and in a couple of months, the GIC is gonna be rolling out a plan that is fifty, uh, five hundred and one thousand dollar deductibles. So we were able to negotiate and match up to the current GIC plan, which, um, still gave us a considerable amount of savings. And then we introduced a, an optional plan that Blue Cross designed for us, that's a select plan, that if people wanna narrow the scope of the hospitals that they go to, they can take this optional plan and save another probably five percent by doing that. So, um, there's a lot of good options out there, but couldn't have done it without, you know, we had a great management team, um, that participated and the employees came to the table really, um, knowledgeable, so it was a good process all in all. I've seen it go bad in a lot of towns and it went really well. Um, so that was good. That takes effect September one. We have to do a notification July one and, um, to all the employees. And then, um, we've started the, um, employee performance evaluation process for all the groups that have evaluations. So we're hard at work getting everybody, uh, supervisors are evaluating employees, employees are doing self-evaluations. They're getting evaluated by their supervisors and, um, we're, um, getting copies of all those, or when it's appropriate, we're sitting in on the interviews as well. So, um, that process is moving forward with, uh, June fifteenth date, uh, hopefully, but it will be completed by June fifteenth. And then the, happy to report that the two groups that don't have performance evaluations are really close to coming up with a document to do that. Library has a committee in place and the police chief is addressing the police evaluations. So, um, that's, that's good news, because we're moving towards everybody on a performance eval. And finally, um, we're gonna be coming, the Personnel Board's gonna be coming to the board next, at the next meeting. I'm gonna hand out hard copies of the three policies to you tonight, so that you'll have it two weeks or so to digest them. And then, um, these are three policies that the town really didn't have before. So we've gone through and done an audit of policies and this, uh, we're gonna be bringing you a social media policy, a workplace violence policy, and a code of conduct civility policy. Um, all of them took great input. You know, we had, um, some of the non-union employees participated, the Personnel Board, um, was fantastic. Uh, Bill's value, you know, looked at the policies as well and couldn't have done it without Jack Dolan, who's our, um, HR counsel. He, he helped in both the, uh, PEC process and he's helping with Personnel Board stuff. So I'll be handing you those tonight to take home and look at. Um, we'll give you electronic copies too, but that's, um, that's pretty much it. And then tomorrow, I have the honor of going to our annual managers' conference. Um, the Mass Municipal Managers Association has a conference, um, so it's great learning. They have a whole special session designed for assistant town managers, so it's not just the managers that get to do it. So I'll be gone. Unfortunately, we'll not be able to make the ribbon cutting on Thursday, 'cause I'll be at the conference, but that's it.
Action, James?
All right, we, uh, moved to approve, uh, the Foxborough Founder's Day public event application for Saturday, June tenth.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moved to approve to relocate one jointly-owned pole numbered T dot ninety-seven slash E dot ninety-seven to a point on the easterly side of Central Street, approximately three hundred and fifty-seven feet northerly from the center line of Alex Road, uh, Alex Lane.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Just a question, when you're looking at the map that they gave, um, it's going from corner of a property land to the middle. I'm assuming that there's a survey done and we're not putting this in front of somebody's driveway. What's the process on that?
This is, um, these actually get reviewed, um, with engineering before they, before they come in. So they, they've confirmed that this one is, is okay.
Is this getting moved for that development down there? For the, um, Foxville plaza there?
Could very well be, uh, I don't know for certain though, Chris. I don't, it, it seems logical to me, yeah.
Still within the right of way, right?
Right.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just, you know, they actually did a poll, they did a poll hearing on that and, and nobody showed up at it, so.
Uh, moved to accept a gift donation of ten dollars from Catherine Owen and ninety dollars from book sales, uh, for the Historic Commission Gift Fund.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moved to accept a gift donation in the amount of one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Sharon Watson Pavilion Gift Fund from the Payson Road Neighborhood Group.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just to, Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman, does anybody, I haven't heard anything about when that's gonna be, any form of dedication on that?
They, they were talking about it at the planning board, so they were gonna be contacting, um, the Lawson family.
I see, that's right, okay.
So you might wanna check the page to see what the...
Is it complete? Everything completes?
Uh, it just, I guess for the plaque itself has not been placed yet, but I was down, I checked the, um, the pavilion, the pavilion's done.
Yeah, they've been using it.
The people have been using it, yeah.
Touch a truck and then they had the lacrosse stuff and people in the playground, people use it. I think there's gonna be a couple outside amenities that they're finishing up to.
I think some of the planting, they transferred some of the stuff from the Old Town Hall and they're planting it down there, just to rescue all those plants.
Which is good.
Moved to accept a gift donation in, in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars from I Care Specialist, uh, to Recreation for Recreation Services.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moved to accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for touch a truck sponsorship from the Moms Club of Foxborough to Recreation.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moved to accept a gift donation in the amount of three hundred dollars to the council on aging for the Golden Age of Radio program from the Friends of Foxborough seniors.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moved to accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred dollars to the Police Department for the K nine division of the Foxborough Police Department for use in protection and care of police dogs from the Hockam Hawk Kennel Club.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moved to accept a gift donation, uh, to Recreation of the Use of Gillette Stadium from Mr. Kraft and the Kraft Organization for the Eighth Annual Mother-Son Dodgeball Game on six to twenty seventeen.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moved to approve the, uh, five sixteen twenty seventeen Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any, uh, any comments on, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vera?
Oh, no, Mr. Chairman, we had, we, we received a letter from the Coleman, um, I got it on my email. It's not in, I thought this was gonna be an agenda, uh, an action item. It's a request for, um...
Susan B. Coleman?
Yeah, the Coleman.
From a walk?
Yes, so bicycle ride?
Bike ride they wanna do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we should, that should, we should, we should take that up, right?
Was it on the post?
Well, it was, I, I...
Is it? Did you see that, Kate?
Oh, it was an information item.
Oh, is that one of those information?
Yeah, but one of the, one of the points in there is that they, they wanted to actually mark the roads, and, uh, we don't allow marking of the roads. So we, you know, they can, they can put, they can put signs up, but they can't mark the road itself.
Yeah, I never received like an application or anything, that's why I didn't have it on the agenda.
So it was just a, um, and...
Someone have to reach out to him.
Yeah, we just need to reach out.
I mean, they don't even have the, what's the date on, the date of the, oh, October first.
October first.
So what do you do? You have to go back and tell them they need to apply?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, can we, because when I read it, what, what concerned me, it says to mark the routes with road paint in the two weeks leading up to the event. And I, and they want signage. And signage, we've always allowed signage, but we've never been asked to do road paint. And then I asked Bill about it and asked Roger.
Yeah.
And Roger didn't know.
No, not even no, but hell no.
If you're gonna ask them to do, to come back to us with the form anyway, you might as well tell them at that point.
Yeah, we'll let them know.
That's not possible.
Yeah.
Do we know if that's...
We'll follow up on that tomorrow.
Is that the same route as the Pan Mass Challenge?
I, I don't know.
No, it goes through Lake, uh, West Street, Mill Street, Prospect, Granite, Lakeview, Main, Cross, Payson, Chestnut, Coacassett, East. That's through Foxborough.
One thing, if we are reaching out to them, I would find out what time, I know they put a generic time between nine and one.
Yeah, it says nine and one.
But I know West Street on a Saturday with RVs and stuff going to Normandy, it'd be a tight squeeze. So I would just try to find out as far as enough in advance of what time they think the bulk of the people will be. And if we do end up approving it, we'll make sure we give Normandy Farms their heads up.
We, we might wanna take a look at the route and see if we can adjust the route.
Yeah, when they plan the routes, do they contact the towns? Because this is the first annual impact ride. Well, like, like you said, on West Street on a weekend?
Yeah, but I, I swear that that's the exact same route as the Pan Mass Challenge. I think they probably just mimicked what they did.
When, when, this is October, so...
October first.
October first.
It's less likely to be an issue then, Chris, because I think, don't, don't they, doesn't Normandy Farms pretty much...
Every weekend there's...
Right up until November?
Till December first.
Okay, I thought, I thought that by September thirtieth, they'd be...
And they're expecting three hundred to four hundred people riding through town. Or a hundred people passing through Foxborough at once. So three hundred, four hundred people in the whole, they have three separate, um, routes.
Teams, yeah.
And there'll be a hundred people passing through Foxborough at once.
Not more than a hundred people.
Not more than, yeah, but still, that's, you know...
I know, seventy-five people on bikes on West Street.
That'll, that's gonna work too.
I almost got hit twice walking from my house to Normandy Farms yesterday, so.
A few blind corners in that street.
So they have to come back to us again with a, with a form?
Yeah, with more detail, yeah. We've, uh, we've already reached out to them on that part.
Oh, all right, okay. So it'll be on an agenda item or an action item, so, okay.
We'll follow up on that tomorrow, Kate.
Vera?
Yes, sir.
You have anything?
I do, actually, a quick question on, uh, the markings committee. So about what time do you think you're going to be, uh, constituting it and how many members we'll, we'll include?
Um, I'll know better after tomorrow. I'm, I'm gonna talk to my, I have an operations team meeting tomorrow morning.
Excellent.
We'll probably discuss it at our nine-thirty meeting on how we'll do it. And I would assume, I, I, I know Doc's scheduled is a couple mornings, like if we did it during the workday, this couple...
Tuesday, Thursdays, better for me.
Yeah, you could, and if that, either of those might work for you, we'll, we'll set two dates in advance and...
So it's Doc, Jenny, and whoever else you determine, do you determine after you, uh, you have the operations meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll probably, one from each of the fire, um, depart, fire, one from fire, one from police, one from Public Works, uh, inspections.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And it'll be a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Excellent, very good. Um, yeah, no, that, uh, and, uh, do you know about when, when you guys would start to meet, or you'll know that?
It probably will, we'll, we'll know after tomorrow, but, but it, we'll let you know.
Excellent, much appreciated. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Moved to a chair.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.